Rob will not, Kaylin's there, Rob will not be with us. And Tom will be joining us, but we'll be just running a little bit behind from another meeting. And so we'll start with our practicing and Matt is here. Hey, can everyone hear me? Kaylin, can you hear me? Okay, perfect. All right, we are gonna go ahead and get started with our work session. We're gonna be practicing our progress monitoring. We have our blackmails part two report with us. We've got AJ with us who will guide us through our practicing of this. And we will probably spend about an hour or so on this. And so we will go ahead and get started and I will turn it over to AJ.
All right, always great to be with you. To other people in the room. So this is probably one of the last times that when we practice that I will lead the practice session. And then what I'll recommend, now that we've gotten a few under our belt, with the next round of practice sessions, and we'll continue practicing, that somebody else, probably starting with your chair, and then maybe inviting some other people to try it out, actually be the moderator for the session. And so what you'll want to start doing is kind of trying to pay attention to what are the things that I'm walking us through so that you can be prepared, when it's your turn, that you can be walking the board through this as well. And so as usual, we're using our little progress monitoring cheat sheet. And so if you don't have that handy, let me know and I will get a copy of it for you. Anybody in need? Okay, I'll send it over to you right now. If you could, please. No problem at all. Got to have your priorities. All right, it is now in your inbox, Terry. So as is usual the case, what we'll do is we'll walk through the process largely to just continue building muscle around the act of monitoring. I just want to start off, it is a reminder, kind of what is the intention behind monitoring? And the overarching belief is that the more the board is clear about what it is that is the highest need, highest leverage vision of the community. What is it that the community most wants our students to know and be able to do? And what is the highest need, highest leverage version of that? And the board codifies that into your policy that you refer to as your student expectations. And so you've adopted, you know, three such policies. So the idea is that when the board does that, then the next part of your work is to cause as much adult behavior within the organization to become aligned with that vision, with the community's vision as possible. One key way that you create that alignment is you constantly come back to that vision and evaluate to what extent are we making progress relative to it. And so that is a large part of the intention of monitoring, is to investigate the extent to which the reality for our students matches the expectations in policy as described by the board. With the belief that the more consistently and rigorously that the board evaluates that, that the board engages in monitoring, the greater the likelihood that adult behavior system-wide will come increasingly in alignment with the community's vision that the board's adopted. And so that's what calls us together, that's why monitoring is such a critical activity. It reveals the vision of the community that the board's adopted. So that also tells us then why the very first step is to just be clear about what's being monitored. This monitoring report is very clear about that. That you are monitoring the board's goal number three in your student expectations policy. This one happens to be about blackmails earning a B or higher in Algebra I. The second thing that you look for, and again, when, this is probably the last time I'll be moderating this, so whoever's moderating, this is what you'll want to be paying attention for and just either asking from your colleagues or declaring for yourself. The second thing is, does the monitoring report clearly show the three previous reporting periods? And so as I'm looking at the progress measures that I'm seeing multiple reporting periods where available back to 2016, 17. But for some of these, the data only goes back to 1920. But yes, I am seeing multiple data going back. Then the question is, do I also see the data going forward? Does it clarify where we're trying to get to? And on each of these, it's got a dotted line that articulates exactly what that is. So then the next thing I'm asking is, does the superintendent tell us what they believe the district's current, what their evaluation of the district's performance is relative to the community's vision as adopted in the board policy? And absolutely, we see for each of these progress measures, superintendent has identified where I think, where I think each individual progress measure is. And the superintendent has identified what they believe the evaluation of the district is overall for the goal, which the superintendent's identified as partially compliant. And then the last step is the superintendent showed documentation that evidences this idea of partial compliance. And anywhere where we're not on track, is there some description of needed next steps? And we talked about that being added in line. It looks like that is not present in this one. And so if this were a real monitoring session. Oh, nope, here it is. It's condensed on the last page. Never, I thought he was gonna do it in line, but he put it on the last page. And so the very last page, there is a description of how the administration intends to respond to the data. What are the, what are the changes they're trying to engage in in response to what the data is describing? And so I would say this has all the information necessary to continue monitoring. At which point, it's now appropriate to open the floor, what questions that you all have. And really, the intention during this inquiry is to spend the large chunk of the time just getting a deep understanding of what is the data telling us is true about our students? What is the actual reality for students? That is the sole purpose for this first segment. And so any questions about who, or what, or why, that helps us get an understanding of what has happened and what is, what is true about the data today? And then before we wrap up, with probably at least 10 minutes left, we'll transition to how questions. Really try to get a sense of, okay, so let's dive more into some of this, how the administration is gonna respond to the data. So the first chunk of this is really kind of retrospective. It's a past focus, questions about which students are the data talking about? What are the circumstances surrounding the data? What are phenomena that help describe what happens? Who will take us away with the first question for administration? And obviously, this evening, administration is represented by the inimitable Madel. Thank you for being here. Who has the first question? Yes, ma'am.
So I know this report is about blackmail students, but who within that population is struggling the most? Have we identified the profile of that student? Within the blackmail population? What was the second part? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? And I really enjoy questions like that. When you ask that question, you get an answer. Make sure you jot that down, because it's entirely appropriate. When we start asking, how is the administration responding? To come back to that specific population that was just surfaced for you. So this is intended to be a cumulative conversation. The first part, we're just kind of getting a better understanding of the data. But then you'll, you'll want to dig into the how, what is the response to data? With specificity based on the answers you hear in the first part. So I would expect to hear later on, so how is the administration modifying, you know, its practices as it relates to African-American male students with IEPs, or something of that nature? Who has the next question?
Can I ask a quick follow-up? So of that population, so that population of our blackmails that have IEPs and those that are blackmails with yellow, what percentage of the total data set does that make up for this? Okay.
That's a great example. I generally try to chunk relevant questions into three buckets. Ones that are about strategy, ones that are about tactics, and ones that are kind of technical in nature. That is much more of a technical question. It's often gonna be the case that your staff won't be prepared to answer technical questions on this further moment unless they were asked in advance, because then they'll know to have the data available. Same thing with tactical questions, unless the, unless that work stream owner is in the room. Whoever actually does that, if their day job is in the room, it's often will be the case that the administration won't be able to answer tactical questions either. What you should always expect is your superintendent should be able to answer questions at the strategic level. That they should be able to say, here is the high-level strategy that we're pursuing. But if they don't know the tactics or the individual technical data points around it, then what you should do is simply ask if that is important, particularly important for you. And just simply ask for that in the next Friday packet or whatever, then administration will provide that for you. What that means, your takeaway, board members, if you're gonna ask technical or tactical questions and you actually want them, are interested in having them answered as part of the monitoring conversation, you need to submit those in advance. Otherwise, expect that they'll get punted to the subsequent Friday. That is the most reasonable course of action. Strategic level questions, always, always, superintendent should be able to answer those in the moment. That is a superintendent's job, they own that. But the tactical and technical, those get punted. So if you, if it's really crucial to you, that they be answered in this conversation to enrichen the monitoring conversation, submit them in advance and then they become fair game. Who has the next question?
Do you have?
Yeah, so when I think of technical questions, this is generally, so one example of that is any data that isn't directly presented in the monitoring document. Or if there are terms of art that are used and you're wondering, you know, what percentage of students fall into this particular category? Like, those type of things are really technical in nature. I don't expect your staff to know every single possible technical detail off the top of the dome. And neither should you. And so any questions that delve into that, I just define as more technical questions. Those come up a lot, that's very normal and healthy for them to come up a lot. They just are gonna go unanswered in a monitoring session unless they were asked in advance or they're physically located in the monitoring document. In terms of distinction between strategic and tactical, I would always expect the superintendent to be able to answer questions like, what is, you know, what are the big picture changes we're trying to make? You know, to increase literacy among our third-grade African-American males? And the superintendent is probably going to say something, you know, can, you know, we have specific professional development that we're engaging in and we are bringing in additional literacy coaches and targeting them, you know, where a student need is the greatest. Those are kind of your strategic, here the, here the big ideas that we're gonna implement to try to address this. What I wouldn't expect the superintendent to know off the top of their head is, okay, so, you know, where are these coaches currently deployed? How many of them are we hiring? You know, what is their certification background? How many hours are they spending with students? You know, what type of increase in time on task are we seeing as a result of that? Those are all some really good questions. And if you want to know those, I just submit them in advance. And so when I think of kind of the differentiation between those, those are kind of the general ballpark of what I'm thinking of in terms of the different types of questions. Again, high-level strategic questions, your superintendent. It is reasonable to expect that they can always answer strategic, give you a high-level strategic response. But if you want more tactical and more technical responses in the monitoring, ask the question in advance.
Take myself off mute. So I'm interested in knowing more about the students that are not meeting the target measure. Is there anything that we know about either their previous math experience or anything that might inform why we're only at 16.2% relative to the universe of ninth-grade students that are actually taking the class and getting the B?
Yeah, the trend is, it's probably not something that you would be surprised by. It's when foundational core is not successful, these same students were not successful in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and now ninth grade. And so we haven't made ground over the last several years. Now, we're now using the algebraic math curriculum so it can give them access, number one, to a curriculum that's actually aligned for the assessment. But number two, our classroom interventions are now also aligned, meaning that we are doing in-class interventions rather than pulling students out for tier two, tier three. The tier two is actually happening in the classroom. And so we get to see the fruits of that labor, but that would be a trend pattern that we haven't made up ground yet. And so it's, the students are the same students that were not meeting standards back two years ago, three years ago.
Gotcha. So what I hear you saying is that, given the fact that math is a building block, their foundation isn't strong enough for them to be able to, number one, get to Algebra and succeed at the B level or higher?
Yes, ma'am. Those foundational blocks in math and stuff in eighth grade were also not completely built.
So one of the things I particularly appreciate about that question is you asked a question in reference data that is explicitly presented in the monitoring report. That always is going to strengthen the nature of the question. I noticed that this data on this page speaks to this. Can you give me, and then ask your question to get more context about that? Get in that habit, that will strengthen the quality of the question you're asking. It will make it easier for you to understand the context of what's being said to you. Who has the next question?
I have a question. On the second page where we did meet our target for the percent of blackmails scheduled in Algebra I with a B or higher, what? Oh, it's the, on the second page here where we met our target. Just asking a question there of what was happening that created that space for us to meet that target? So what were the things that were happening within the district for that target to be met?
Yeah, so this particular progress measure is about the students. The work around Algebra Math actually started last year in eighth grade. So we had some specific work in eighth grade taking place to actually build some of those foundational blocks, first and foremost. The second part of that is intentional scheduling and actually some collaborative work with counselors to make sure that we are not scheduling students out of Algebra I in sort of a traditional tracking process. If you weren't doing well, you may have not taken Algebra I your freshman year. You may have taken a foundations course or a power math, something like that, that didn't actually count towards Algebra rather than actually placing students in an actual Algebra course for credit. So this is what that represents. And so a couple of years ago, it was, you know, with good intention of, we're gonna give kids more power math and some more sustainable supports foundational work to actually get them ready for Algebra. We saw that that doesn't work. That's actually not, actually accelerating, that's actually not moving the needle for students, particularly through their math trajectory and their math identity over the course of four years. So we changed our approach to that and actually worked with counselors, worked with teachers and high school staff at the middle school and at the high school level to make sure that we're actually scheduling students into Algebra specifically. And we build their supports and their foundational work through the new Algebra Math curriculum in the classroom.
One of the things that you should hear in a monitoring session. One of the things you can hear in a monitoring session that should almost universally bring you joy is when the administration highlights their identification of something that is not working. That is monitoring gold. What that means is now we've brought onto the conversation, hey, we tried this strategy. Here are the reasons we thought it was gonna be awesome. This didn't work out, and here's what we learned from it and have since pivoted to that. That type of conversation and that kind of acknowledgement being surfaced is absolute rock-solid gold in monitoring sessions. And so there, there is value to you going out of your way of celebrating, you know, these Edison moments where I found another version of a light bulb that doesn't work, which gets me closer to finding the light bulb on behalf of our children that does. You never want to create a situation where the administration identifies, hey, we did this and it was a total failure. You never want them to say that and you not meet that with a sense of celebration and, you know, somewhat elation. It's like, okay, great, so that, now we are one step closer, you know, to identifying, you know, what is going to make the biggest difference for us to. So I really, really appreciated that in the response. Always be listening to that and just always feel comfortable highlighting, you know, I really appreciate you all identifying that and lifting that up. Who has the next question?
I have a question, Matt, regarding the, the new district interim assessment. It appears that in Measure 3A and 3C, our sixth graders and our eighth graders were pretty close to meeting where we wanted, or their projection. Whereas our seventh graders, we were well below our target there. Do you, can you explain, or do you know what was happening in sixth and eighth grade this year?
I don't have a pulse on that statistic yet. There is definitely obviously a recognition that there was a concentrated focus in eighth grade, right? Starting from last year, knowing that we're moving from eighth grade into ninth grade and that's the most, that's the closest students are gonna be to Algebra before they take Algebra, right? So we started with some of that foundational work and then Algebra Math there specifically and began to ripple, ripple our way down, go up through the ninth, tenth, eleventh grade math courses, and also back down into seventh, eighth, or seventh, sixth, and fifth. So I don't have a quite, a pulse on, like, I have suspicions of why that would be, knowing that we actually kind of began in eighth grade and are working our way backwards. And so it's not gonna be quite the accelerated result that you're gonna see in eighth grade and ninth grade. But I can do some more digging on that to be, to make sure that my suspicions. But I can do some more digging on that, to be, to make sure that my suspicions are accurate bound, or on that.
Thank you. And then, I just have an observation from the standpoint of the report itself. Would it, would it make more sense to keep three, the progress measure of three, A, B, C, and D? Would it make more sense to hold off until after the winter interim assessment? Because right now, we're probably just beginning that test window, or maybe are in the middle of it.
Yeah, I can help with that.
Yeah.
My answer is it would be helpful. And here's why, actually. The slower pace of our implementation of our curriculum, if you're given the reality that we're in, and the multiple values of in and out, has actually slowed our implementation, and the students actually receiving the actual curriculum. And so, the assessment is aligned to the curriculum and the pacing guide. And so, we actually haven't hit yet the right time to administer the winter assessment. And so, we were looking to actually push that back so that the curriculum is actually aligned with the assessment, so that when students receive it, they've actually been taught it.
Yeah. And per our approved monitoring calendar, I think that's why we probably have all of the progress measures in here right now. But I think the board would be amenable to, to monitoring one and two, or the progress measures one and two, and then holding off on three until after we had the data that would support, support those progress measures. I don't know, any feedback from the team on that?
No, I would agree with you, Kim. And I think as our governance work group talked, we know that, especially after we've had conversations with AJ, it makes sense that we look at the monitoring calendar in a different way next year. And so, we even talked about putting that on our agenda as a governance work group to lift up, how do we, how are we strategic in that monitoring calendar?
And then, even being, this year being very unique, and, and having that in and out, and that mobility between learning modalities to be able to adjust that calendar as we go and say, all right, when we created this calendar months ago, we didn't know what we didn't know. And adjusting, so.
A great catch, great catch. Who has the next question?
I want to follow up just a little bit. I'm looking at data on page three, which is our supplemental data. I'm looking at the top chart. The ninth-grade students scheduled into Algebra I at the beginning of second semester. So, I think those are the students that were successfully made it through first semester or had passed in eighth grade. I'm reading that correctly, is that right, that top chart? So, yep, so these are the numbers of students that successfully passed, I'm assuming, the first semester of Algebra because they were scheduled into it for second semester, plus the students that passed it at the end of eighth grade, is that correct? Okay. So, in looking at this, one of the things you had mentioned earlier that one of the groups of students who's struggling the most was our black males who have an IEP. And if we look at this, it looks like that's true if I'm reading it correctly. That's also true that that's much lower, that's our lowest population for our special education students in general. And so, I'm hoping this isn't getting us too much into the, to the how it might be, so we might, we need to stop me. But what, what have we been doing to address that? Or, like, like what is unique for those students? And, and kind of what's the, can you just kind of tell me about that environment that's maybe causing that?
Yeah, are you looking at the 54.8%?
Yeah.
So, that's about involvement to IEP and Algebra. So, students with IEP are obviously, as I do know, that's part of their, their goal plan. And these are, these are specifically, this doesn't teach that students with an academic plan versus a behavior plan. So, they're all, it's all structured for the IEP. And so, a lot of that is IEP by IEP, sort of by students' unique situation for each situation. But this goes against a sort of a change in sort of philosophy and strategy around making sure that our IEP team know and understands the foundational work that must be done in a Gen Ed classroom without pull-out services, so that students are going to get what all kids get, that's not with an IEP, and then some of the intervention inside the classroom. That hasn't always been the case. Students were literally with good intent, IEP'd so that they actually are not scheduled in a Gen Ed Algebra I classroom to actually receive those foundational supports in a power map class or something like that.
Okay.
As I was talking about earlier. So, that's actually what, that's still reminiscent of that old way of thinking, of actually how we're going to schedule students with really good intentions of building up their foundational skills. What we know is that those four of us, that they're just not working.
Okay. Okay. So, so then what I'm also hearing, I think, is that those, that would then, that number of students would then include students at all levels within our special education program. So, like our, like our students would be classified as like level one with like a math goal. And also, our students who would be level three, like our severe profound, who might be on an alternative assessment, they're still counted in this number, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Could you say some more around progress measure two? You're thinking about how we went from above the line to below the line? I was wondering if you could share?
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize you were sticking to me, sorry.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could share your reflections on why we went from above expectation on progress measure two to below expectation?
From semester two to quarter one and semester one, is that what we're referencing? Yeah, so, semester one is obviously representing semester one of this school year. So, when we started off fully virtual, students, the enrollments and how students are actually, whether they chose fully virtual versus a hybrid, and then we started off fully virtual, that actually changed enrollments. And so, what I mean by that is, is given the class schedules and how we have to master schedule, we had to be, we had to move certain staff from all of our high schools into the virtual academy versus keeping staff back to accommodate for the shift. So, when students, even though they all started off fully virtual, students then actually pivoted, and we scheduled it as such so that when they pivoted, for those that chose in person, could actually show up and actually have their courses not be changed all over again when they showed up in person. That resulted in actually students not being scheduled into all of the courses that they needed to. So, we had to, for example, schedule a third of the students into Algebra I in quarter one, and then another third in quarter two, and then make that back up in quarters three and quarters four. So, I don't know if I'm actually explaining that super clearly enough, but the master scheduling issue of having two modalities at the same time, it limited the capacity that we can serve in Algebra. And so, it actually dropped the enrollment in Algebra in quarter one.
We should make that up in?
Quarters three. Quarters, yes, turn, turn, quarter three and quarter four. That should come up. It is.
Okay.
Yes.
You have the upper trajectory and the enviable monitoring.
Correct. We, we should make that up by the time we get, right now, we should be making it up right now in quarter three.
So, we'll make up the enrollment, will we make up the instruction?
Yes. Meaning that, there's an assumption in that, that the enrollment is, you know, being there is half the battle. Now, the instruction has to be on grade level, standard-based, and all of those, you know, aspects of good teaching need to be in play right now. And so, the, the qualifier there is knowing that we got students learning in Algebra with this new Alastair Math, getting access to it on grade level standards. One of them's getting access to it virtually, and one of them's getting access to it in person, and to some degree or another, a little bit of both. So, that, that's going to be the nuance. So, what we also be able to do is, is to give you data on who's actually receiving algebra instruction and actually earning a B or higher virtually versus in person, and be able to tease that out.
Yeah, this time, you've been asking a lot of questions that help us get understanding of the context behind the data, and you all have been asking some really strong questions. I, I really enjoyed, as we've practiced more and more and more, the kind of the detail and the thoughtfulness behind all of your questions as the team has continued to grow. And so, as we continue to dig into this monitoring report, feel comfortable now adding in additional questions that don't necessarily maintain the past focus of all the questions at this point, but now ask question on how, how is the administration going to respond going forward? So, we've been asking past focus questions, feel free to now start integrating in future focus questions to get a sense of administration, how are you going to respond to the data? As a caveat, this is still not the occasion to begin offering recommendations to the administration. Hey, so, superintendent, are you going to do this, this, and this? Keep that question for another day, that's not a monitoring, it's, it's a fair question. It's just not a monitoring question, because it's essentially giving a recommendation. So, when you're asking forward-going questions, I would look at a specific chunk of data to, hey, you know, I noticed this is taking place with this. Exactly how are you all planning on adjusting and pivoting to account for that? That's the type of question. You really want to know, what is our administration though? Not what ideas can I offer to help the administration? That is an appropriate question and conversation, just not during monitoring. During this, you really want to know, what do they know? And what do they believe are the answers? So, with that said, who has the next question?
Matt, really quick, you had talked about the groups that we are really underserving at this point are, are black males with IEPs and ELL. What will the district do specific to those populations that will help bring them up to that B level and assist them in their work?
Yeah, I think the. So, ensuring that our AP teams are actually working with students and with families around ensuring enrollment and access to grade-level instruction via tier-one supports in Gen Ed classrooms. That's, that's an ongoing process that we will continue, and won't let up on that. The other aspect of that is making sure that we dial back, if you will, our professional learning. I know that sounds a little bit maybe contradictory right now, but that's for two reasons. Number one, teachers are feeling really overwhelmed still, right? They have been from the onset, and that has actually not relented. And so, making sure that we're chunking out the professional learning that we're providing the teachers regarding delivering on-grade level instruction and implementing the Alastair Math curriculum. Right now, too, there is so much, such a thing is too much of a good thing, right? So, recognizing the context that we're in, and not overwhelming staff with, we're just going to charge ahead as we solve it back in August, and not make any adjustments. That, that's actually the wrong thing to do for our staff right now because of the fact that they're still feeling overwhelmed and sort of burnt out. So, we need to chunk the, the professional learning and make sure that they have bite-sized opportunities to actually implement with fidelity, rather than giving them everything and hoping that they're actually going to be able to remember something. So, that's actually the, the second part of that. What's also closely connected to that is, is recognizing the fact that given our instructional makeup hours plan, we've actually taken professional learning full days from them. And so, that can do one of two things. It could, it one, it'll recognize that, number one, we're in compliance with the state around our hours. But number two, it actually gives an opportunity to have our students in front of our teachers again for, for four additional days. So, there's four days that we've got in the spring that we're accommodating back into the student learning schedule. So, four days is, is a significant amount of time when it comes to actually being face-to-face, even if by a computer, with a student and a teacher. So, that in and of itself, that doesn't, that's for all students. That doesn't specifically get to your question around students with IEPs in that regard. But it, it's not going to not serve students with IEPs in that stretch for the, over the course of the next semester.
So, if I could piggyback, I mean, how, how do we make sure that we are targeting our, this target population, our population, or program population is black males? And so, how do we know that we are specific to meeting their needs versus the general overall population? Because that's, that's, that is the group that we are wanting to make sure that we see some improvements. And so, do you see that there are different interventions? Or how are we making sure that we are really aware and cognizant that we are meeting the needs of our black males? And not just saying, we're going to do it for everyone, but, I mean, we are measuring the impact of blackmail. So, how are we going to address that specific to this population?
That we neglect to do is, is ask students, how is this actually working for you? And so, that has to be part of our, our game plan, not just in the media, but just from here on out, right? That should be part of how we actually operate and do business moving forward in all respects, whether it's Algebra, or literacy, or whatever, you know, what have you. We have to ask our students, how is this actually working for you specifically? And so, that is also a part of, that, that's the idea of actually of Alastair Math, is actually, it's more engaging, it's got, it creates identities for students. And so, that's where we're getting that access, I'll continue to play on that. That access to that curriculum is significantly important because it actually is designed to bring student voice into the experience. And so, not just asking students un-authentically on a whim based on a dataset, but asking them authentically within the classroom setting around, how is this actually working for you? How do you know that you are learning? How do you know that you're reaching your target? All of those aspects are going to support our students, of course, particularly our black males, because we need to ask students.
I did think of something while you were answering that. And then I was thinking about it and kind of zoned out for a minute, so I apologize. So, if we aren't pulling our students out of the Gen Ed classroom to help them get that intensive intervention, we're using a curriculum called illustrative curriculum. Does that, this might be still like a what question? I'm assuming that provides the intervention for the student based on different skills?
It does. So, it, it, it addresses chaplain foundational work within the classroom study. I wouldn't go as far as say that there's nothing that gets pulled out.
Okay.
Because there are some exceptions to that.
Okay.
I would say that the more accurate answer is actually that students are getting intervention within the classroom setting itself, without being what I was then in setting. And also, there's extended time that is necessary for that, that's also offered. So, at the high school level, the two-hours extended day that began Monday is actually now in play now. So, schools are working with specific lists of students that they are reaching out to to say, hey, I noticed that you're actually not on par or on target in this particular subject matter. We'd like you to stay, is that a possibility coming to your ride? If you're there, but we got two-hour opportunity to support you.
So, how will that process be monitored moving forward so that we know that it's, it's, it is successful, or it's continuing to be successful? Or like, how will the team make adjustments moving forward?
Yeah, I think, well, I think your question actually is, is part of the answer, right? That we actually don't do this actively, that we do it intentionally, so that we actually know, or look, know what data we're utilizing, and it's universal from building to building, and from subject area to subject area, of why we would actually, we'd have to say, we'd like you to stay on Monday for two hours of the extension report. That has to be a universal sort of call to action, because every Monday, for example, is out, every Tuesday might be in a hundred yards. And so, there's some consistency among that, among our high schools, and how we're actually bringing students in. And doing that in a very intentional way, it actually allows us to track, is this working or not systemically? Or is this actually something else that we might need to act with our fifth year and actually pivot to do something different moving forward? Like, just knowing why we're doing what we're doing every day at our school is, is important.
I think just knowing why we're doing what we're doing every day at our school is important. Not only because it's important to be able to say, this student stayed for two hours on a Monday, fifteen times in the next semester, right? I think also say, what are we actually teaching in the two hours? To make sure that we're tracking students with targets, so we're not just asking students to say, for something that they've already learned, they've already covered it. We're actually looking to bring to the center, we're going to do gas and skill development and mastery. And so we're going to actually specifically target students that, you know, hey, you need help actually and we'll be step equation. And so this is what we're actually working on this week and the next few weeks. And so I need you to be here because you haven't seen that in your work yet. So we're going to do a different job, a better job of teaching you differently in these two hours to make sure that we're supporting you in the learning program.
So just to follow up with that, so I'm assuming then that classroom teachers would know which of their students were maybe attending these interventions and we'd actually be able to track then at least at a classroom level of how those interventions are impacting their progress moving forward, correct?
There will be a correlation between, we should be able to see a correlation between students that are staying for algebra support and specific skill set, specific targets and benchmarks and how they're actually performing in the classroom. So that, there should be a crossover, if that's what your question is.
I think so. Yes. So we'll be able to actually track that data to know how successful that is at the end of the school year, for example.
Absolutely. So yesterday or Monday was the first day of our activity day and we should know that as they will, you know, which students were invited and why. So they'll see over the course of time, which students are actually are showing up, which students are actually making progress with their measures, with their benchmark and actually how that's translated into an actual crossover.
So at the end of the year, if we're seeing huge gains in like our IEP population or ELL, you might be able to tell me at the end of the year, you could track it back to this, basically.
Sure. I think it would be, I don't know what happens, but what do you think? Say, hey, prior to grade awareness or good work, we were seeing this trend in learning. February eighth, we started to see a tick off in my direction. What changed was extended days, additional hours of the day. Is that the change that needed and it's so why or why not? I think that's the first question that I have. Then second, if any, you might be thinking about that, that's work progression in the actual of a class that's zero one. Because again, what we're going to see right now is accommodation, oh, it's skill deficit. We have it exposed as well, where there's still showing deficits from personal, for the ones that is also an immediate response to support screen board on skills that they actually, they want to know more about. They don't feel quite confident in these skills. They haven't shown that in the classroom. So yes, that was just two days ago and today it takes two hours for us to prove that even in the beginning.
So what I'm also, okay. So what I'm also hearing from you is that you're evaluating the quantitative data that you're getting from students as they're going through interventions, but also the qualitative data and what students are telling you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So Matt, if I could piggyback, because I know you're identifying kids. Is there anything that you're able to do with the kids who are maybe not choosing the intervention? Or how are you maybe going to work with them to try and support them in their learning?
Yeah, I suppose. One thing I'm already engaged in is students that have been, have a trend of multiple absences. You know, there's not an expectation necessarily that students are not going to attend school, but then all of a sudden show up for two hours after school. It could happen, but that we can't, you know, hope it's not a strategy, right? So what we have to do is be able to actually reach out to students and ask the same questions of, why isn't this actually working for you? Is there a place that we can actually meet and work with you? Is there a community partner that we actually could pair you up with? And so we have a number of community partners that are not only in play, but also on standby around how they can actually support families. And so making sure that we're working with our community partnerships program around attaching programs to students in need whereby school actually may not just be the right fit or the right model of service for them so that we can still do it in a very safe manner. That's comfortable to the student, that's comfortable to the adult or the program sponsor so that we're actually still meeting their needs. And it may not just be in a physical plant building at school. It could be in a library, it could be at their home, but we have to work some of those details out depending on the needs of the student.
I have a question regarding our pilot schools that use illustrative math last year. Have you looked at the students that were attending those schools? Do you see that those pilot schools are showing larger gains or higher achievement in this area than our schools that are in year one of the use of this curriculum?
I haven't, I haven't looked at that data in a little bit. That's a good question, Kim. I can get that though and pull out the pilot.
Okay.
Response to, that I'm seeing here, our number one response is the curriculum itself. I would be curious to see how it works for the students in year.
Year two.
Is it three or is it two?
Well, in middle school, that would be in year two now. Yes.
And then I, you had mentioned the extended learning and I'm seeing in the response on the report that that's just for high school. So for our students that are not achieving in the middle school are they to, you know, the extended learning opportunities and it's just not reflected here?
Yes, they are, but it's not reflected as a part of a compliance plan with the state. And so some of their extended learning opportunities may not necessarily even happen after school. We've got students that are actually there prior to school starting, you know, thirty, forty-five minutes early and they're actually utilizing that time. Teachers are already on contract, same thing for, we've got teachers also operating through lunch and learns with students and doing pullouts through lunch for students that actually that way they want that, they want to leave that, whatever space, whether it's their classroom or cafeteria space that they're currently eating lunch, they actually are doing one-on-ones or small groups with teachers during lunch and then of course always after Sorry, Kim, just to highlight that. The reason why high school is significant right now is that it's a two-hour block. That's typically not the case and it's typically not universally scheduled amongst all five high schools. All five high schools have always done a version of some after school, you know, supports for students, but this is, this has been a systemic high school endeavor to make sure that we're coordinating efforts and then we're actually offering opportunities for students. Even when a particular school, for example, may not have a math teacher available, you know, maybe they're quarantined, maybe they're sick, maybe they're out. And so the actual design of this particular after school extended learning program is such that we can actually pull and we've got a roster of teachers from all schools to say, are you available to actually now come from this school to this school to actually support these students on this day? Without setting this up universally, we wouldn't actually have been able to do that with any sort of coherence.
And that time, is it being prioritized by our goals? For example, if I am a student that is not high achieving in algebra and I'm also not high achieving in English and science, is algebra prioritized or is it the choice of the student which extended learning they attend?
That's a good question. And I haven't walked out that. I know schools have and just, you know, based on my experience, I'll circle back just to be sure that this answer is correct, but I think the answer is both, right? I know it's the core subjects that we're actually offering after school for extended hours. And so it might be a split time, right? It might be an hour in algebra, an hour in ELA or science. And so they have, two hours is a long time to spend, you know, after a long school day on anything. And so being able to chunk that out and recognizing the need of students that, you know, sort of multimedia sort of need of quick response and reaction, the day it has to be structured as such as well so that it's not a punishment.
We were monitoring algebra achievement for all students. In our last session, Tom had mentioned that as a board, he needs us to communicate that this is available, that this after school work is going to be there for students and encourage everyone to attend. How are we as a district communicating with those families? How should we as a board support that work?
Kind of all of the above. So it really is an all hands on deck in terms of implementation. So. Targeting students specifically, it's open to anybody, but there's also intentional calls. And so any student can actually be present there who chooses to do so, but if Matt really needs to be there, I'm going to get a call and I'm going to make, and folks are going to actually follow up with me, both through IC Messenger, through School Connects, through just the phone call, the text messages. As you know, as a teacher, that a lot of that is actually that personal connection with the teacher, sending that text saying, hey, this is, I'd really like you to be there and making arrangements to get that done. And so it's also through a blast through schools utilizing their social media around the opportunity for students to actually get extended support.
I have just a general question about the amount of time it's going to take for us to meet the goals. So how long do we give ourselves to allow the current course of action to play out before we make a determination that it's not working and we need to do something different? Sort of, how do we sort of get our heads around not feeling like we have to be impulsive because we're not getting there tomorrow, but also not feeling shy about four years from now if it's not happening, saying something new has got to happen? I mean, what's the plan? How are you going to help us figure out it's not working and we have to do something different?
Well, I think the next round of assessments actually is an indicator, right? On whether or not we're, how successful we are. I think we have to keep in context, you know, what students are actually experiencing through their learning lens, really looking at what is, what is the virtual learning environment actually producing and supporting for students and their progression towards meeting that algebra goal versus in person? Seeing that data and not talking about it as a concept actually is going to be important for us and recognizing for students that were likely, might be a city that they learn really well in. And so what is that opportunity for actually those students to engage in additional virtual learning courses throughout the rest of their high school career to actually support a dual modality that actually fits their schedule, fits their learning style? So I think learning from the context of how students are experiencing curriculum right now versus in person versus virtual, that's important context for us to know as it relates to how these students perform in their end of course assessment, or winter assessment, which will be closer to the end of course this school year. I think each of those data sets in terms of a fall, winter and spring assessment is an indicator to let us know, is this actually working or not from a systems level? The space in between that are daily assessments, weekly assessments and all of those indicators within the classroom that tracks students' progress towards meeting their learning goal with that algebra. So to answer your question, we need to, we need to come to a solution. I don't, I can't, I would not feel confident in being able to tell you. I have thoughts and I have, you know, there's some research out there around assessments and actually as the implementation cycle and how long it takes in terms of an implementation type of around, you know, that six to 12 months. That's all, you know, I guess supportive data, given the context that we're in. I'm a little bit at a, I feel like I'm shooting in the dark when it comes to what we're currently experiencing and utilizing research around implementation and what that actually, how long it takes to actually get that implementation up and running with fidelity.
Can I ask just another follow-up question to that too? Because this really goes more to the instruction side. So I believe that you guys have referenced already sort of disaggregating data down to the building and classroom level so we can determine the effectiveness of our PD and our teacher support. So can you help me maybe just sort of think about what additional teacher support looks like, especially if we get to a building or a classroom where kids just aren't cutting it? What does that look like at the teacher level?
It looks like a couple of things. It's first always approached through a lens of support, right? And so that one might be the teacher, if he or she is not on a learning cycle with an instructional coach, that might be the appropriate next step. Definitely having multiple classrooms on the license and having. Place, right? And so it's very similar as we would talk about asking a student what's working for him or her, asking the teacher, what's working for you, what's what not working for you? Is it a matter of just not understanding the curriculum? Is it a matter of not actually having enough classroom management to support student voice? Because the curriculum and the instructional modality that we expect in classrooms requires teachers to team students. And so if students team without a complex, cognitively complex task and without SEL intentional components built into this, the class can become a little bit erratic, to say the least. And so in that regard, we have to be able to support teachers through an instructional coaching model, which puts them on a learning cycle, allows them to go through nine weeks of working specifically with an individual coach. We could pair them up with another teacher to say, I want to model this for you. I want to show you how this works, which also happens with the instructional coach. It could happen with a peer who also is also subject to like teacher. One of the opportunities that I know that we've utilized up to this year is we'd like you to see another teacher. This teacher just doesn't happen to be in your building. And so we're no longer restricted by bricks and mortar. You can watch it virtually. And so we want you to see how this teacher actually is delivering the same content that you're delivering, same age of students, same course, and see the nuance of how this teacher actually does this instruction. Then we dial that back. Let's go back through some design of how we actually came to this delivery methodology and let's walk through that. What did we learn from it? And let's change it up for the next day, for the next week so that we can begin to build on successes. It's always approached through that lens and with that intensive support. Ultimately, when it comes to documentation, that could end up in an intensive support plan whereby we're actually providing more intensive support beyond instructional coach. At this point, it's an instructional coach and maybe an administrator, it might be a teacher from another building, a peer review, it could be a book study, it could be a number of different things based on what the teacher is saying he or she needs in order to actually improve and meet the expectations of not only the A standards, but of actually what we're asking of them within an instructional design. And that ultimately results in you improving, you're meeting goals and benchmarks in order to continue to stay in your position or you're not. And at that point in time, we may be supporting you to work elsewhere.
That's really helpful because I know that so much of our response is really focused on the instructional side of things. And so I really just wanted to understand when it's not working, what the steps are that we take, because when it's not working, ultimately it affects our students' ability to meet the target measures, so.
It does. And one of the things I probably need to just say that I should have led with though. When it's not working in the classroom, the first thing we should look at is what are the systems and policies that we're doing at the building, at the central office level that it's not supporting that teacher? Because you know, they want to be the best they can, right? They want to show up and do all those things. But also at the end of the day, it's also about result. It's also about results with children. And so we need to have that moment where we're all saying, here's the support we're providing, what needs to change, what doesn't need to change? What is the plan that we're going to work and collaborate, build with you and co-construct to make sure that we're actually getting results in classrooms? And then we need to get those results. And if those results are not being met and we've done all that we can and you're doing all that you can, ultimately we probably need to part ways.
I want to go ahead and pause then for a moment, the monitoring on that note. And I just want to take a moment to reflect on the monitoring section. So you spent, spent about 40, you know, minutes kind of on the digesting the data and getting clarity around that and then over 20 minutes or so really getting a forward facing view of, okay, so what's the response to everything that we've been learning? So just, what's, what's one thing that you took away from this monitoring session? What's, what's one thing that you took away from it? What's one thing you took away? Who else?
So AJ, I would say for me, I mean, in comparing this to what I've experienced when I first joined the board, which I have not been on the board that long, I. I really enjoy this process because we get to talk about the data, what's happening with our kids. We're not going into the weeds, which we absolutely do not need to be the weeds. And I feel like this is uplifting the conversation to really bring the focus back to our kids. So I'm really excited that we're moving in this direction because I feel it's the direction we should be going.
Any other reflections?
You know, I feel like it gives the opportunity for us to truly know what's going on in the district. And it provides these open and honest, transparent conversations where if there's things that aren't working or that are working, we can get that. And I felt like in our conversation with Matt tonight, you know, there was, this didn't work, so we went this way. And so I think it gives us the opportunity to really to dig into what's going on in our district. But also it helps for me to be able to communicate that to someone who asks them questions, you know, going forward in our community. So for me, I just think the conversational piece makes it so much more transparent for us to have these conversations and ask these questions and get the answers in it. It just seems lighter for me than what we've done before. And I will say even being on the board from the beginning and looking at it now, this just feels different. So I enjoy this process and us really just talking about it. And then, you know, from that, we're learning from each other. And then how also we can communicate with members of our community.
I feel like these are the important questions, which also coincidentally sometimes are tough questions. And they're things that it's reassuring to me, I think, sitting on the board, realizing that Mr. Smith can answer these questions in the same way that Dr. Ahart can. And that that makes me feel like probably all of the chiefs who are involved with academics probably have a similar understanding of each of our goals. And I think that feels very reassuring to me as a board member that these really are baked into the organization in the way that I think we intended for them to be when we wrote these for our community.
Yeah, I think that this evening's session was just incredibly informative. You can tell that Matt has just an incredible amount of, you know, hands-on knowledge of what's happening at the building, whether it's from the standpoint of scheduling, assessments, the timing of instruction. And I think that we missed some of that in the previous mode of monitoring. And the amount of information that was shared today, I think, was very important. And I think that I have a better understanding of truly what's happening in reality for our students. So I appreciate all that you shared with us tonight.
You know, offers some amount of conversation to take back to cabinet. And say, hey, you know, here's some thoughts that came up. You know, how are we wrestling with some of these? And, you know, if something comes up in these conversations that is just a, oh, you know, we hadn't thought of it in that particular perspective before, let's go back, we'll go back to cabinet, we'll throw it around and see what happens. Like, that's a really great outcome of a monitoring session. That should never be chastised, well, why didn't you think of this? It should be like, hey, you know, this is the value of having a whole bunch of people who are committed to what's possible for kids around the same table, hammering on the same stuff month after month after month, is that we help make the entire team stronger. Two particular questions that were asked this evening that I want to lift up is ones that I found particularly gratifying. One question you asked was, how do we know that in the things that you have planned going forward, that it's that the goal that we've adopted is actually going to be the priority? And the specific question was in relation to additional supports that students could opt into, but they could opt into a variety of subjects. And as a board, we prioritize this subject. So how do you know that this is what they're going to get as opposed to these others? That's a really critical question. Because again, a large part of the intention of a board saying these are the top priorities is because it gets everybody rowing in that same direction. And so questions that drill into, to what extent are people actually rowing in the same direction? And that direction should always be our goals because we represent the community's vision. And so this is the community's vision. Everybody should be rowing in the direction of the community's vision. That's just, that was a really great question and a really wonderful exchange. The other question I would lift up is along the exact same thing, which was asking, how do we know that? So our goal talks about blackmail specifically. How do we know that this particular intervention is disproportionately targeted at black males versus just, you know, anybody who comes along, get some, and we hope everybody, and hopefully it'll sprinkle on blackmails as well? Because of the way you wrote your question, essentially what you're saying is the same thing. What evidence is there that this community's vision, as we've interpreted it as their representatives, is the focus and that the community's vision isn't being diffused across to such a degree that the focus of the community isn't actually being achieved? Again, it's a really great question for the exact same reason is that it continues to communicate the expectation that we represent the community. Here are the things the community has told us are the most important priorities to focus on. What evidence do you have that the community's vision is in fact, in practice, the most important thing that's being focused on? So I just want to lift, it was just a series of wonderful questions. It's really kind of hard to pick among all of them. But just the extent to which those continue to drive this idea that we really want everyone rowing in the same direction. And that means sometimes we're going to have to make choices that narrow us in. And so some other stuff that is really nice to have is going to have to be set aside in order to achieve, you know, the intention of that focus. Those type of questions help drive that. And I'd say just hold on to those as you're constantly dreaming of the next question.
AJ, I chose not to ask this question, but it's something that in my mind comes up regularly. And I'm never really quite sure how to pose it because I don't want it to appear to be anything less than genuine. But I do, I often wonder about this notion of cherry picking. So are we identifying those kids that would typically have the propensity to succeed anyway and leaving the others behind so that we can meet the goal? And I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that to be accusatory. I just think it's a real question because sort of your natural inclination might be, oh, well, gosh, you know, I'm going to identify the kids who I think are definitely going to be able to knock it out of the park. And then the others, you know, I'd love for them to, you know, get in the game. But if that's going to mess up my numbers, then... So I don't, you know, I don't, I'm not trying to make enemies here. But I do think it's a legitimate question that someone in the community could ask us. So how do we know that we're just not, you know, going to the top and picking those kids that typically we knew could accomplish this? And the other kids are just not even being addressed at all so that we can say we've met the goal?
Three things on response. First, thank you for asking for my support with that. And this goes to everyone. If you ever have something that's burning in your brain, but you're sitting on the edge thinking, is this really appropriate? Like, or how do I get this into the conversation? Just contact me. Like exactly, just reach out and we will brainstorm together. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that. You know, in addition to that, this idea of, in the education parlance, you know, second point, of bubble kids is unfortunately a real phenomenon in education land. And so I don't think that it is, you know, kind of fear mongering to question, is this educational concept showing up in our school system? You know, when that's not our intention. So I think bubble kid, kids who are right on the bubble. Like, you know, if we just nudge them forward, you know, they'll make it over. Yeah, they're right on the cusp. And so maybe we should just focus on those kids and, you know, the little AJ's of the world who, even if we pour everything we have into this year, they may make huge gains, but they're still not going to cross this threshold, so we won't get credit for it. So we're just not going to focus on little AJ. Like, that is a legitimate fear to have. And so I just want to lift that up. There's nothing inappropriate about having that as a concern and wondering, how do we, yeah, how do we combat that? So those are the first two thoughts of it. So then finally, to the actual media viewer question. I do think it is a fair question. The way that I would try to bring that in is I would try to, I would try to drill into a specific piece of data. And as soon as you mentioned that, the one that jumped immediately into my mind was progress measure one. No, it's not progress measure. Progress measure two, yeah. The jumped immediately to my mind is like, okay, so how do we know that we aren't just enrolling students who we think, who we've already analyzed they can get a B? And so we just went and grabbed that, you know, blackmail child and made sure we got them in. Yeah, but the little AJ who we don't know if he's ever going to get a B because he's so far behind. So we didn't have him. And so that accounts for, you know, the, you know, the 25.9% you know, students meeting because we went and found them and got them enrolled. But what about all the other students? So that's, so what I would do is if I was in your case, is I would find the specific piece of data on the sheet and say, and then I would ask that question. Is I'm looking at this, how do we know that in order to accomplish this, your strategy hasn't been to simply focus on the students who are right on the cusp and leave the rest of the students behind? And I think that is a fair kind of what, you know, in the who, what, why, how? I think that is a very fair what genre of question. And so I would ask it. But to make sure that the question actually hits the way you intend, the coaching is drill it into data on the page, not just kind of broad out speculative in the ether. And then I think it will actually set the administration up to be thoughtful in their response. And to be fair, I think most of the time, the response is going to be, I don't know. Like, we really have to, you know, evaluate kind of, how did we? Did we just see all students who, you know, are English language learners and identify as black males? And then we just target and we, you know, try to get all of them enrolled in this? Or was there some selectivity? You know, we only had so many seats this year. So how do we figure out who got the seats and who didn't get the seats? So I think that's fair. But to make the question stick, stick it to the data. And then it'll make it a whole lot easier for administration to be responsive. And again, notice, part of the wealth of this evening's conversation wasn't just in what Matt could answer. It was also in what some of the stuff Matt couldn't answer. And he's over there taking notes, he's like, you know what? That's a reasonable question. And so what he's probably going to do is, you know, him, Tom, and a bunch of other smart people are going to sit around a table tomorrow and subsequent days and think through, hey, this is a reasonable question. How are we doing this? How are we making sure that our teachers are getting the support in this way? That we're meeting them where they are and not expecting them to come to where we? And so just because a question doesn't immediately get answered in a monitoring session doesn't mean the value of the question being asked hasn't already been met just in the asking. And so even though that particular question probably isn't going to get an immediate answer, I'd ask it anyway, and that's how I would ground it. Other questions or observations about this?
The students who are enrolled, but then focusing on those that were kind of in the C range and their achievement. So I wasn't quite sure if it was an access question or an achievement or intervention.
I'm with you. Thank you.
I was going to say, I've sat in those PLC meetings as a teacher of, our building goal is 85% of our students are proficient in all of our ELA standards. And the question automatically is for teachers is, well, what percentage of our students do we need to get to be proficient? So how do we ensure, right? Because we have finite minutes. You have finite minutes. And so it's like, how are we going to reach our two and a halves, right? Like, we'll start with our two and a halves. And then the question was, okay, we're definitely going to need all of our two and a halves and we're going to need some of our twos. But then we still got that little group down in those one and a halves, right? Who like, they couldn't even tell you what standard we're on today, right? Like, if it's, so like, how do we ensure that the message we're sending is that we want all the kids and not just the numbers to meet our goal? Like, so I think that's kind of a question for the board. It's how do we send that message to you to make sure that that filters down through those PLC conversations in the building?
Yeah, I think I would, I'm asking it like it is now. I think our job and what we can do is create some context around that. To find that theory described, an example, what that looks like on a day-to-day. I'm maybe drawing back, right, to the building around how that plays itself out. And the answer that in the classroom level, the grade level is that we are actually, it doesn't change our daily target of what we're actually supposed to teach that day because that is actually aligned with curriculum, it's aligned for the actual pacing. What it actually might change, for example, is how we actually prove it to students? And do I know which students actually are not, you know, sort of visible in the goal itself? And am I cognizant around that in terms of my esteem of students, right? I think those are really relevant conversations that have a through line from the classroom to the board table.
So I want to highlight, as we start to wind down our practice session tonight, this is literally the first time you practice monitoring where I never had to throw a yellow flag. That's gross. Didn't have to throw the yellow flag and then blow the whistle.
He didn't have to yell at me. He had to do this.
Yet, no, nine. No, so this is wonderful. It just shows like you're incredibly intelligent people. You grow fast, you learn fast, you work hard, you develop quickly. And that's a great role model for you all to demonstrate, you know, for your adult staff and obviously your students. And so just bravo on the continued growth. Again, as I suspected as we started, the next step in the maturation is I've been facilitating these. And so the next step is you will have to choose among yourselves to be the moderator of the next practice session. I'll still be present. I'll still be present, but, right? Not it, not it, not it. I'll still be present, but my role will switch to kind of being the little, you know, cricket on the ear, on the shoulder of whoever is leading that particular conversation and helping them make adjustments. If your colleagues get off, then I'll be like, hey, you know, AJ just asked this question. It's kind of far field. How are you going to handle that? You know, and so my job will be helping you get better at moderating. There are a couple of ways you could do it. You know, I've seen most boards, to be fair, the board chair just always moderates those conversations. But I've seen at least, you know, one board where they rotate that around, where each board member says, okay, which, you know, one of our monitoring reports, are you going to own responsibility for moderating? And so there's pros and cons to being moderator. Namely, when you're a moderator, you generally don't get to give your best version of participation, but you have to divert so much brain energy to facilitating the larger conversation. And so if you feel deeply passionate about an area, I probably wouldn't be the facilitator for that area because you won't get to say much. That's just something to be thoughtful of. If you want to, you know, subject your chair to it, then that is entirely appropriate. That's what she signed up for and she should have known better when she raised her hand. But if you want to spread the love around, just if you want to spread the love around, that's fine too. And so just plan for that, that whenever, when we have the next one, I just, at least three days before that, you know, Madam Chair, might quite let me know who it is. And then I can check in with that person and, you know, we can walk through anything they need to make sure they're ready to effectively facilitate. make sure they're ready to effectively facilitate the conversation. We've got two more practices, one in February, one in March, got it?
And these can be different months, right? I hope that I was being clear with what it is, or I try to keep it like, it wouldn't be ideal, we could do something like this again, where whatever's coming, we may be good practice. And that, that, you know, the heavens, I think according to our monitoring calendar, we should have reading in there, so we should be able to go through that one. And if there is anyone that wants to facilitate and practice that, I'm okay with that. I, I know I'm going to at some point, so if you're really dying to do it, the next one, you can do that, and then I can wait until the last one. If I hear from no one, then I'll just prepare some, to be the discussion, or the discussion for the next one. And then I would like someone to practice that as well. I think we've always been about that. If I'm not there, or whatever, I think it would be great for someone to.
I would like to advocate for, for a rotating individual to be the moderator, just because I have witnessed the, the board chair's voice being a bit muffled as they play that moderator role, not specifically in monitoring, but over the course of the meeting. Frequently, I think, well, I wanna know what Duana has to say, or I wanna know what Kirsten has to say, and I didn't, we didn't have that opportunity. So I would like to advocate that it is a rotating role.
If you would like to do this too, you know, maybe if it's five folks that are like, I really wanna do this, we rotate that way too. I will have to say, to your point, I like to ask questions sometimes, so, you know, not being able to talk, and even, I think that's just in facilitating meetings in general, you're, that my role is not to interject myself into that, it's really for you all. So I would appreciate the rotating piece as well, because there are times you just have questions, and then my default is to just send the questions to Tom ahead of time before the meeting, and that's how I get my responses back. So to your point, I would, would appreciate that too. So I think maybe going forward, we could get a list of people who that's something, you know, that they would be interested in doing, and then we could rotate that way. I would definitely be fine with that.
I also think this gets to the point of building the bench on the board, in terms of practice of facilitation of a small part of a board meeting is a good step towards knowing whether or not you might enjoy, for example, you know, having to do that for all the board meetings and the special meetings that happen three times a week during a pandemic. Like, you might know whether or not you like that.
I have a question for Matt, and it kind of stems from the conversation we had leading into this meeting. Is there anything that we can do as a board to ensure that, that the admin team or the presenting team has a safe space? Because I know that this is a new process. I just want to ensure that you have what you need from us to know, that we're not attacking you when we're asking our questions, that it is truly a conversation and a give and take, and if there's something that we can do to better facilitate that, that safe space, let, let me know, or let us know, or?
Well, I can give, you know, maybe... First, just, that statement alone is helpful. There's, there's a propensity to wanna come in and please, and, and give good data, and when the data's not there, it, it doesn't feel good to be able to suggest that, hey, this is, this is where we're at. And so they're, knowing that, particularly the way AJ phrased it, that saying, here's what didn't work, if that's an acceptable answer, that creates vulnerability. And I don't know that, that everybody has always felt that going into the conversation, but so making that statement like, that's, that's super helpful tonight, because I plan out I've got a litany of things that I'm gonna communicate to, to my team tonight, along with the opportunity to say, it's okay to say you don't know, or to turn to the person next to you, or say, Matt, did you actually answer that question? That, that's actually okay, it doesn't look like we're disorganized, it just looks like not everybody is, has all the information that all at once, right? So just the recognition and the awareness of that is super helpful, and, and I think will create a much more authentic and fluid conversation, knowing that we, we don't know everything, and we're gonna make mistakes, but we're gonna learn from them and actually do better the next time. If that's the, the expectation from all of us, I think this is a great start.
Yeah, I, I don't want to speak on behalf of all my board colleagues, but I think that, that, that safe space for failure and learning from that failure and taking some of the backup is definitely something I would advocate for, and I think, I don't know, I'll let my board colleagues speak as well.
If I could take a stab at that one, too.
What you said can make me think of this.
I don't know if you guys can hear me or not. Is, is, it's, it's never, you know, no matter what questions we respond, you know, that I respond to in advance of a meeting, it's always okay to bring those up again. And so if you're, if you're, if you have a train of thought going, you know, down a certain direction, sometimes it's helpful for us to hear that in advance, you know, even if it's not a specific question, just so we could do some thinking about that and be prepared with where you might be coming from at the meeting, so we can give, we can have a richer discussion about it. I know that's not always possible, but when, you know, if you're, if you, you know, if your thinking's going down a, a certain line of questioning, it's helpful for us to know that in advance, because then we can probably be more specifically responsive to that.
Yeah, and I want to highlight, the encouragement is for you all to submit questions in advance around items that you'll be voting on, for the purpose of economizing your meeting and making that inquiry more transparent to your community, because now it's documented in a form that they can easily access. The intention of submitting questions in advance during monitoring reports is not to actually speed up and make, and be able to save time on the monitoring. And so that's top point. Even if you submitted a question in advance about the monitoring, I'd still feel comfortable asking those. If you submit a question in advance about items that you're gonna vote on, really the whole point of that process is to help speed things up, so that you have more time to spend on monitoring. So those questions I would not ask, I would not ask, you know, in writing, and then ask again at the meeting, just so I could be on TV asking questions. Like, I, I, I would avoid that behavior. But on the monitoring side, I would feel comfortable asking in advance and asking it, because it will help enrich in the monitoring conversation, because you'll be better prepared and the staff will be better prepared. And so I just want to co-sign on that point, but distinguish, there are two types of questions you might be asking in advance. One's about items that you're gonna vote on, I'd be asking those with the intention that you're not going to be repetitive in the board meeting. One's about monitoring, I'd be asking those with the intention that you are in fact likely to bring that up in the, in the board meeting. Thanks for that, surfacing that, huh?
What I was gonna offer, what I was thinking while you were speaking, Kim, was, I feel like, Matt, how many years ago was it when we met with the, the two women from Texas, and we met with all of the Chiefs? Was that like two years ago, three years ago?
Yeah.
I felt like the monitoring reports that we did in that quarter or so that happened right after that were incredibly helpful, and I felt like the team and the board had a lot of trust, because we'd had some of those conversations during that, and I felt like I actually knew some of the Chiefs. And now I feel like you, you've all changed a little bit, the board looks really different, and I just don't know if we have those foundational interpersonal relationships to have that type of vulnerability that Kim is talking about. And so I wonder if we may want to, Madam Chair or Board Governors, to maybe put in that we do an annual retreat with the Chiefs? That is some business, but also just allows for us to get to know each other? Because I don't know how well a, a board, a governance, like, like our governance team and our implementation, or like our execution team can really have that vulnerability if we don't even know each other.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would, yeah, I mean, of course, Tom's gonna have probably some thoughts on that, and, but yeah, I would liken to that, it, it, there could be times when it feels like someone to a state auditor's office to have a conversation about just data, and, and without any real context or relationship, and that's kind of vanilla and bland. We wanna avoid that at all costs, I think I would be kind of on board with that, I assume that you are, but as well.
Of course.
Because as you know, there's a lot of folks that have the granular day-to-day functions in a director's role, a coordinator's role, where having them as, as present in, in our conversations leading up to this, I think actually might be helpful, and it might generate and spark some synergy within the conversation at the board table.
Yeah, the idea of, so, annual opportunity for, you know, building, I, I think it's a really reasonable suggestion. The only thing I would add to that idea is that the intention of offering is generally to be a conversation between employer and employee, so there's contact between board and superintendent. And so it is entirely appropriate, it's absolutely appropriate for the superintendent to have their entire cabinet present, you know, or the appropriate members of cabinet present for monitoring conversation. And then if you ask a question that delves below the strategic into much more of the tactical, you know, day-to-day operation stuff, or technical questions about data, then it's appropriate for the superintendent to say, well, let me, you know, get my content expert, you know, to fill this one, and then for them to pass the buck. And so I wouldn't want you to get to the point where the entire conversation bypasses a superintendent and goes straight to cabinet. For the times when the superintendent does hand the ball, you know, to one of their running backs, it, it would, I think it is generally helpful for there to be a background of relatedness that predates that, that particular instance. And, and so, yeah, this idea of like, you know, once a year, you know, retreat, and just to, you know, figure out people's, you know, kids' names, you know, and things of that nature, you know, seems reasonable. Or job title, yeah, yeah. Do you work here? I, I know you do something, yeah. So with that said, unless there are any other questions, I just really, really, really wanna lift up the, the growth and just the continued development and the, kind of the scholarship that this board has demonstrated through this process. You keep pushing me, twice in this process, I've had to revise the materials to keep up with your level of growth, so maybe don't grow so fast. But the, the fact that you all are nudging and growing just really says a lot about what you're committed to on behalf of your students. So as always, thanks for letting me be part of the party. Madam Chair, back to you.
All right, I just want to thank you all for your time this evening. I would like to say, since we did practice this, that Kelly, Kim, and myself will be doing some coaching and getting some certification going in governance. We have all identified ourselves as nerds in this process, and we wanna continue to grow in it, so we will start a cohort, I know starts this weekend coming up, and then, Kelly, it's just coming up. Okay, next weekend is Kelly's, so we're going to be starting that process, but thank you all really for coming out in the cold, I know it's freezing outside, so I appreciate your time this evening, and we'll see you all at the board meeting on Tuesday.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, thanks, bye-bye.